First on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda.
Move to further agenda of the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting items presented.
Second. Have a motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Before we do that, we were asked to provide some history on curriculum and how this curriculum came about because we want to make it very clear that this is not curriculum that we just buy into our teachers. The curriculum is created by each teacher in our school district and there's a long process that it goes through before it reaches you tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Taylor and let him explain the process.
So soon after school gets out, we schedule a week where the teachers on rotation for that particular subject or grade level come in and we spend a week working on curriculum. We start out with a backward design. Dr. Wiggins and McT I think is the name. We do a review of how to design curriculum backwards and it's basically a week of professional development where we dig into how to do it. We take it step by step. They have homework each day. We've got an agenda for each day. They sign in each day and we work down in Dr. Smith's business lab with these wonderful big computers which make things easier that they spend a lot of time on. That being said, that's the traditional way to do it. This year, Megan Keeker and Lynette Foff came to me with the elementary ELA and reading curriculum and asked me to do it a different way. I wasn't comfortable with that. I didn't want to do it a different way. I like doing it traditionally because this was really my first time doing it. Dr. Fleet was still running it last year. I wanted to keep it the same until I had my feet under me and I knew what the process was before we changed it. They made some valid arguments. They have been working on curriculum during the day with their grade level teachers in the elementary schools. They've been doing a fantastic job. They were making huge progress. They talked to Dr. Pyle, I can't, is it Jamie Pyle? Jamie Pyle. She's a curriculum expert and she's been in education for over thirty years. She came in and did some professional development with not only them, but our elementary teachers and if I'm remembering right, we asked them to come in. It wasn't a requirement. They were asked to come in and they showed up because they were really conscientious about building a curriculum that was a living document that didn't sit on the shelf until the next three years when we were at curriculum again. They wanted to be able to use it. Dr. Pyle did a great job and so that's a success story. It was led by Megan Keeker and Lynette Foff. They were in the trenches with the teachers trying to get the assessments written, trying to get the learning targets done. So they did a good job and I'm glad I listened to it this time. That's the process. That's both the traditional process that the middle school and high school teachers used and the new process that the elementary teachers.
So the documents were approved in the night were started four or five months ago.
Absolutely.
And they were presented to a committee of students, parents, community members.
But that's the reason we have this amazing curriculum is because of our teachers and they worked hard and we went to them all kind of through the year.
All of to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Certainly. Have a motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. We will not be able to respond to your questions at this time. The purpose of this session is for us to listen to you and give you the opportunity to share with us. Per policy BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening. I put together a presentation for you with all of my information and I have a nice fall background so you don't have to worry about any spiders jumping out.
Scared you last month.
The first item in the report of the superintendent is notes of appreciation. They're typically in your book, but there are none for the month of November. Next item I have, parent teacher conferences. Were held on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I like tables, so you get a table tonight. The first column has the name of each building. The second column is the number of students who had a parent or guardian participate in the conference, in a conference I should say, because I think some at the elementary didn't all take place on that night. Their teachers go out and make contact and meet and talk to those parents wherever and whenever they can. Next, we have the number of students enrolled and then we have the percentages by building. I know you also like to see some history, so on this next slide, I did a comparison, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen to October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Bloomsdale Elementary had a participation rate of ninety-six point ninety-three percent this year, which is up from last year. St. John Elementary had ninety-three point seven-four percent, which is up from the previous year. Middle School had forty-nine point five-zero percent, which is up from the previous year. And then at the high school, we had thirty-one point one-zero, which was down slightly from the previous year. Of course, our, this is what we see every year, our participation rates at the elementary are very high and as kids get to middle school and high school, parents use the Power School app and they log into the computer and they're checking grades constantly. Plus, the kids at those levels are actually using Power School too to monitor their grades. So, you know, it's something that we're always working on to improve, but we're very happy with the numbers this year and are thankful for those parents and guardians who took the time to come in and talk to our teachers about their children.
A lot of them with a hundred percent. That was awesome.
Individual teachers, yes. That is always really nice to see. The next item, we have registration dates for pre-K and kindergarten all that time. It's hard to believe, isn't it? Bloomsdale Elementary will have their registrations on Saturday, March twenty-eighth from eight to twelve. St. John Beach Elementary is Saturday, April fourth from eight to twelve. And don't call just yet. We will begin setting appointments on Monday, March second. At every board meeting until that, until the registrations take place, I will have this slide up there and remind everyone that this is coming, so please put it on your calendar if you have a preschool-aged child or one that's gonna start kindergarten in August of twenty twenty. That's amazing. Any questions? Dr. Green takes care of all of this, so.
She's a nice.
She does a very good job. Next, already, we have principal reports. So, who's going first?
Go first tonight or come?
Teacher and staff of the month was Ms. Gekk, her teacher of the month. She was nominated by Ms. Carlson. Ms. Carlson stated that Ms. Gekk is always so full of great ideas and is patient. She helps her students find ways to help themselves, which is so awesome. And Ms. Morton Thaler, she was nominated by Sarah Vogt. She says that Sarah goes above and beyond for her students. She cares for them as if they were her own. You can tell that they feel loved and supported. And both of those people are awesome people in my building. I appreciate them. Before I move on about parent teacher conferences, some of my teachers did them before that night and some did them that, after that night, but we really tried to get one hundred percent. And then I was proud of our fifth grade because our fifth grade did student-led conferences and about half of the students showed up, about half of them didn't because the parents didn't really believe that the kid needed to be there. They're like, you said bring your child, but I don't believe that, so. But they did really well. They went through their leadership binders and they talked about their goals and what they needed to do to reach their goals and where they were in each subject so the kids could speak about their own academics, which was really neat. Positive office referrals for the month. In the top left-hand corner was Delia Hart and then down at the bottom was Abigail Meese. Up at the top, Connor Dornkamp. Down at the bottom, Taylor Beckham. Malina Bates is at the top and then Grace Warren and Alice Sebo and then Remi Kenzuspin. And then we had Red Ribbon Week and Veterans Day. We had all kinds of neat activities. Kristin Huffman organized a lot of our red ribbon activities and it was, the kids enjoyed seeing the dog. Down in the bottom corner, we, in every classroom, we said that we pledged to keep our hands off drugs and they all made their hands and we made just lay in the hallway. That was our Halloween picture, but it was Red Ribbon Week, so I put that into our staff Halloween picture. We were all incredible teachers. Then Veterans Day, it was mostly student-led. We had our super speakers. Those were those students up front. Ms. Geesler helped us as she always does. We had the VFW hall. It was amazing like it always is. I mean, it's pretty similar each year, but they always add a little something different, so it's very nice and the kids were excellent. Their behavior was awesome. We have a new sensory hallway. This is for kids in the wintertime when they can't get, you know, outside. They need to get their wiggles out. The teachers can take them in the hallway and they can jump to their ABCs and they do a backwards crab walk and they hop to a saying that says, "I'm worth it, I'm brave, I'm confident." And then at the very end, they're doing the tree pose like the student in the middle and it says, "I am calm and I am a leader." And then they go back to class and they're supposed to be more productive. But we were excited to get that started. Then we had family fun night. We had over two hundred and, well, we had around two hundred and sixty-eight people, which was really good because it was the night after our two snow days. We debated whether to reschedule it or not, but we already had our food and all the activities planned, so we went ahead and had it and a lot of people didn't show up, but we still had almost three hundred people, which was really good. And it was a real calm laying back. It was steam was the theme and we used the Ozobots. We used the Makey Makey. That's up there in the left-hand corner where they do like electrical circuits. They can use their hand-to-hand potatoes and bananas and things like that for electrical circuits. We had cardboard creations where they cut up cardboard and they had patterns that they can make out of cardboard. In the gym, they were doing pumpkin catapults and they had to catapult the pumpkins into these pictures of Mr. Kingery and Mr. Bosler. So they enjoyed that. But it was a fun night. Everybody complimented on how much fun they had. And, whoops. Just some upcoming events or other highlights that I couldn't fit on my five slides. We have a math competition team that has formed and started practicing. I think our competition is in January or February, but we start early with the practice so we can do well in the competitions. We have a robotics team that has started with fourth and fifth grade and they'll compete in January. We have coding clubs for K-two and three-five for, it started a couple weeks ago, for the next seven weeks. We will be delivering our habit leader signs this Friday. We have our habit leader ceremony, November twenty-fifth, which is Monday at six o'clock. We have Hour of Code, December eleventh, dare graduation. And we have started tracking our school-wide whigs for math goals. So we've been pretty busy in October. And that's it for Bloomsdale Elementary.
Thank you.
I'll put it backwards. Tap it down. Alright, so I'm going to present some of the events and fun happenings that have been happening at St. John Beach Elementary since the last school board meeting. Red Ribbon Week and Halloween were all celebrated the last week of October and at the top, we did a school-wide theme for the teachers. We were all emojis, except the bottom left-hand corner that you can see that Coach Kreidler and Mr. Cook and Mrs. Foman decided they wanted to be average Joes. So they came up with their own little costume. I think it was mostly because the men didn't want to wear the emoji. But then, we also had to restructure the way we've done our Halloween parade, the costume parade, because we were using Identikit. And so we needed to check all the parents in and we needed a place for them to stay and wait. So we placed them in the gym and we paraded the kids through the gymnasium and back down the hallways and the parents were very appreciative that we did not get rid of the parade. And so there are a few pictures of the kiddos dressed in their costumes. We too also did our Veterans Day program recently. Ours was ninety-nine percent student-led. We had two main speakers, Lucy Gekk and Chase Hammetts. They hosted and emceed almost the entire program. We only had one or two little snappus and I don't think anyone in the audience maybe noticed, only the people that had the scripts realized that they had made a couple of mistakes, but it was nice to see that they were able to pull that off. Our fifth grade students did the white table ceremony and then every student, I guess in some way, shape or form, participated in the ceremony. The pre-K to two kids did a poppy pledge. Some third grade students did a Veterans Day video. Fourth grade students did thank you to veterans and so forth. So that was really cool. And then we had Lois Fleet and Sharon Geesler help us as well and they presented monetary awards to the first, second and third place winners of the coloring and art contest. And then Bryce Collinger let us in taps and we're gonna have to find a new taps player for next year. He's done it for the last three years and he's done really well. We had one positive office referral since our last board meeting and it was Wyatt Kellum. He was a kindergartner. He's a little cutie there. And then we had our October students of the month. Our robotics team is up and running and so they competed in their first competition a couple of weeks ago. And we had two teams that were able to compete in the next round that day, so they made it a little further into the competition with only having two practices under their belts, so that was pretty awesome. And if you see some of the pictures there, the way the coaches explained it to me, and the coaches are John Beckett, Crystal Cane and Andrew Frich, and they have to build those little square shapes and then they're strategically placed on the board according to where they are told to put them. And then they have to use their robots to pick up the balls and move them as fast as they can in one minute. It's really interesting because they work with other students from other schools, people that they're not even used to working with. So they said they had to learn to strategize and plan and communicate with perfect strangers and they said the first round did not go that well and the students quickly realized they had to share their strengths and weaknesses and start to work as a team. And they said throughout the competition, they progressed and got much better at what they were doing. And then at the end, they had sponsors and local businesses interview the students and ask them what sort of skills they were learning and what they were taking away from it. I didn't put any videos in there, but Crystal Cane does have a couple of videos that we could share with you of the interviews. They're pretty cool. This was a fun slide that was really fun to create. So our lighthouse team decided that they wanted to honor some students that were going above and beyond all the time, not just every now and then, but all of the time. So, once a quarter, each classroom teacher is asked to pick a habit leader that's living the habits. And they wanted to give them a sign and a T-shirt. And so we had to, they had to come up with a way to fund this, so they solicited local businesses for a donation. And if you look in the corner of the signs, there's a different business in the corner of each sign and so it's advertising for them as well, so it's a win-win. And then all thirty businesses will be represented on the back of the T-shirts that the students will get. And then once a semester, for starters, we're gonna try this out, they are going to have like a habit leader ceremony over at the pack and maybe have some cake and some drinks and maybe some guest speakers and ask the businesses to participate and come in. And they were talking about maybe getting pictures taken of the students with their sign and presenting them to the businesses and the sponsors as they come in. The teacher said that this was way more fun than they anticipated. It was moving. They said a couple of them were brought to tears. We also have some videos, if you see on Facebook, where a couple of the kiddos were at home when the signs were delivered and they were completely surprised and in shock. So, all around, I think they felt that this was probably the most worthwhile experience they've ever had as a teacher and I think they're looking forward to doing it again in January. And then this was just from this morning, so I guess Mrs. Cecil had toured a different school on a leader in me visit and had come away with the idea of posting these letters that were wooden and they were put into the seven habits. But we put a little twist on it. Back at the beginning of the school year, we just asked teachers to grab a random letter and paint it. No pattern, no rhyme, no reason, just paint it the way you want to. And then we let them dry and collected them. And then, I think, two faculty meetings ago, at the beginning of the faculty meeting, they were given some letters and said, figure out what your letters spell. And so quickly, they were able to figure out that their letters spelled the habits and then we had them collect them and hold on to them. And this morning, in lieu of a traditional faculty meeting, they got to synergize and do some team building and they were asked to take their letters randomly throughout the building and put up their habit. And so they worked together with their teams and they hung these up with little command strips this morning. So these are in various locations of our building and that's what's been happening at St. John Elementary.
Well, good evening, everybody. We have been having fun the last month. I want to just be honest with you. There's just all the good things that are going on in the classroom. We also take time to celebrate, have a good time, create that pro-social environment that we're always looking for on N E. At the top right, you can see some familiar faces there. I'll let you decide who is creepy, who is cutie, who is mysterious and who's spooky, but I promise you, they're all totally free. At the bottom right there, you can see a shot from our school play. This was the first production that Mrs. Bosler and Mrs. Kind were in charge of and they just did an amazing job with a really large cast. And that, I can tell you, as a former director myself, that can be really challenging and they, they put on a great show and gave those students really a good opportunity to shine. At the left there, you see some of our students who are dressed up for the Halloween dance, which we had this year. As we always do, this was sponsored by Science Club last month and that too was a great success. Along the top row, you can see some of our shots from Red Ribbon Week. At the left is one of our little guys who is maybe a little quieter than some, but not on this particular day. He was in his element and he chose to dress up as Mario. And it's funny because at the Halloween dance, he was dressed as Luigi. And then he showed up as Mario and I thought, that's, that's the same guy. And then a shot from our assembly and our guest speaker is pictured there. And I want to take this time to recognize Mrs. Huffman for the work that she does on Red Ribbon Week. It's really a huge job, one that a lot of people don't realize is quite so big because it is her responsibility to provide Red Ribbon Week activities for students all across the county, regardless of what school they attend and some who aren't even in school yet. Because she makes sure that the daycares receive some attention as well as the private schools and our schools and so hats off to Mrs. Huffman and her capable body assistants for a really, really good Red Ribbon Week this year. Along the bottom are some shots from our career week that we had in middle school, sponsored by Mr. Draper, who always does a fabulous job. Down at the left, you can see some of our guys, also in the center too, some of our guys who went down to visit the Perryville area Career and Technical Center. And on the right there, one of our favorite speakers, I don't know who you guys are all familiar with, Mr. Tyson Chapron, he came in to talk to our students as well. And again, hats off to Mr. Draper. That was, that was a great week too. Positive office referrals, as you can see, we have just had a lot of those lately. We spent the year encouraging our teachers to really get those in and it only took us a reminder to do that and, and they have been flooding in, as you can see, quite steadily since then. Some of these students are on there because they are improving. Some of them are on there because they take the time to be kind to others. Some of them are on there because they go above and beyond when it comes to making sure that we have a clean campus. And we have one on there that's very near and dear to my heart and without giving specifics, I'll say, he went out of his way to make sure that he was extra kind to one of our special needs students. And that, I got to witness that one and that, that really got me. So I'm especially proud of that young man, without giving away too many details. So there are some of our positive office referrals that have come up since we met last time. Our spotlight award winner for this month is Mrs. Hogan Miller. She received multiple nominations. People spoke of her positive attitude, of her willingness to work hard for all students and I mean all students. For example, last week, I saw her in the high school commons helping a student. It's not unusual to see her helping kids when she's away at games. Today, I found her on the stairs having a very frank conversation with a young lady who was having some home issues. She, she's there for every one of her kids and every one of her athletes and some who aren't her students and aren't her athletes. She goes out of her way for everybody, so that was, that was well deserved and I think, I think our faculty would agree that she was the right choice this month. So congratulations to Mrs. Hogan Miller for an outstanding job, day in and day out. A few odds and ends for you. The Veterans Assembly was a huge success and I always appreciate that high school lets us join in with them on that. It's nice that we can fill that whole gym. I think it sends a great message that we're all there to support our veterans and I love that about this community and this school. That's a very important day to me, one of my favorite days of the year. I think I've told you guys that before. Gwen McWynn represented the middle school on the stage as the middle school emcee for that event. But I also want to give a personal shout-out to Bryce for his work on the trumpet. As a performer, I can tell you, it's a very humbling experience when you have to stand alone and blow out a solo like that, especially in a moment that's so important to so many people for so many reasons. So hats off to him as well. Mrs. Huffman and I hosted our first NJHS movie night as your new NJHS sponsors this year. That was just last week and was a great success. We had about seventy students here to watch Toy Story Four and we were able to serve them pizza and concessions and just, just had a great time socializing that night and having fun. And looking forward to Christmas. We have already begun the process of adopting a family. We worked through the county health department. Melissa helped coordinate that for us and so some of us are already hard at work on that, looking over the needs of specific children and coming up with funding for them so that we can make sure that they have a good Christmas. And that's something that we're just proud to do, thankful to do and happy that we get to be included in that. On the professional development side of things, we're starting a series in our monthly faculty meetings on being more trauma-aware and trauma-informed. As you know, this is an initiative from the state that came down through legislation a couple of years ago and one that we're just brushing up on, going through some of the basics. We're gonna talk about how to recognize students that have had some adverse childhood experiences and how to better work with them. And that's a series that we just started this last month and will continue for another month or maybe two, not only through the faculty meetings, but also through some readings that we're sharing electronically and some surveys to kind of see where we think we are and where we think we need to go. And then down at the bottom, coming up at S G M S, I've got some dates listed for you there. Christmas dance, it's hard to believe we're saying Christmas this and winter that, but it's here. Christmas dance coming up, winter choir concert on the tenth, Christmas play on the eleventh and the winter band concert on the fifteenth. So, thank you all.
Good evening. Basically, I jumped right into it on the first slide. I don't normally do that. I do want to remind everybody, we have the senior citizens dinner coming up Thursday, December fifth at six P M. And we are now accepting reservations. I think when I looked today, we were up around one eighty, somewhere in that category already. So, again, it's something that our FBLA, NHS, DUCO, various groups put on for the senior citizens and if you've ever been to it, if you've attended it, it's such a wonderful act and it's so neat to see the students interact with the senior citizens and just to see really, to me, a whole community embracing. So, if you have an RSVP for that, please do so. On Wednesday, October sixteenth, Mr. Toon hosted, kind of a change here. We used to do a college night and with the new emphasis at the high school and the secondary level of students being career ready, he changed it to a college and career night. So we had recruiter- So, we had recruiters, we were looking to get local businesses in, uh, just sort of a workforce development all the way around. And I wanted to bring that up, and I put Mr. Toomes on there because just what he does day in and day out, behind the scenes, with the ideas, with the creativity, making the connections, interacting with students is phenomenal. And unfortunately, I don't have as much of an opportunity as I'd like to, to speak of him normally, because he is so behind the scenes. But this was one of those chances that I wanted to give a shout out to him, and an excellent attended evening. And he's kind of talking that it's, he continues to grow. We moved it into the cafeteria out of the Cowans this year because it got so large. But he's pretty certain it's going to end up taking over both rooms, if not more, when it's all said and done. In the upper portion there, you'll see our four-time defending district champion volleyball team. And part of the other reason why I put that on there is you're always proud, this team was amazing the way they came together as you want all teams to, and really, at the end of the year. And they hadn't had a chance to play all year together as a team, I don't think we'd had anybody helping. You had several runs and bouts with that. They came together, really some phenomenal volleyball there towards the very end. And as you guys know, uh, Cook Fowler, I believe, has submitted her resignation, she's made that public. And it's a great loss for us, but it's family, we completely understand, it's part of what we are about. Speech and debate competed in the Jackson Invitational. Ms. Turner and Ms. Yuzel continued to put together Strong Force, and just placing their city highs by Saraizerwick, Mandy Martin, Smith, Mark, Emily App, Beulah Lidle, Caitlin Fuller, Holly D'Amico, and Sean Yuzel. And over on the right, we have our Voice of Democracy, and I was proud of that, it's kind of an interesting thing. I believe that went on the same night as district volleyball did, and there was an email back and forth. We were talking about how great the volleyball was, and Dr. Oldham, I believe, emailed and said, I don't know if this is at the level. And he was being modest, because I think we all know that finishing first, second, and third in the Voice of Democracy is just insanely incredible. And I'm going to embarrass her because she's in the room tonight, so I will point it out. But finishing second was Katie Chapman, Katie, get away from the board! Okay, first place, of course, was Addie Taylor, and third place was Katie Fowler. Fall sports banquet, again, this is something that kind of gets glossed over by me. We talk, I stand up all the time and talk about how wonderful when we receive the academic awards from Mesha for our teams. But rarely do we actually cover the fall sports banquet, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. But again, I featured Mr. Nix because another, um, another instance where he just continues to go above and beyond, continues to work hard for his students and his program. And I really, we focus so much on the students that we don't always get to focus on the staff that makes it happen. And Mr. Nix does a wonderful job. This was the fall sports for volleyball, cross, and girls. And tomorrow night will be the fall sports for football, um, cheerleading and emeralds. Because, of course, as we added more sports teams, Mr. Nix made the decision to separate the fall sports to make sure that we could adequately cover everybody, I believe, now we, maybe spring is well that way. All district band and choir, we talked a lot about the gentlemen on your left tonight already. Bryce Trolinger, with his wonderful performances at each of the veterans. But he also earned a one rating, first chair all district for that trumpet, in the trumpet section. And I want to remind you guys, the impressive thing about all district, and especially winning a number one is, that district is so large, it's not like our athletics where they're divided into so many different classes. That is a huge district. So, to get that rating, uh, is almost like being first chair, or, you know, the number one quarterback in the state, or something like that. It is incredibly impressive. And we had one for band this year, a young man in choir, uh, and Kellen Hogan-Miller did it. So, pretty amazing, and I wasn't able to attend that performance, but Ms., um, Jokers who did, said that it was quite possibly the best performance she's ever attended for the district choir. So, my hats off to those gentlemen. Our weekly shout outs, again, I'm continuing to be amazed by the things that my staff is pointing out that we do. Uh, you'll see Hunter Karen there for his great work dragging basketball, Coach Robinson pointed that out. That was a morning practice, I think it was somewhere around a six-thirty practice. And to get that many high schoolers there at six-thirty in the morning, to me, is an amazing feat. And it shows the dedication of our young men and women at the high school. I pictured there Kyle Schweitz and his broadcast crew, because some of what always goes on behind the scenes, and Dr. Smith is another one of those. With the veterans, they've all talked about what went on up front, but you've got to remember, these individuals bring that out to the world and broadcast our stuff to the world. And a great example of that, if you haven't had a chance to listen to the Parkdale Central football game, two hours and forty minutes into it is when Matias kicks the field goal, first to go ahead, twenty-four, twenty-two. And if you want a little bit of chilling, you want to know what students mean to staff, listen to Kyle Schweitz when he makes that call. Because it is an absolutely phenomenal call that he makes on, um, YouTube. The other interesting part of that, to show you what kind of connections we're making, Mattias's father in Brazil was watching that game live. And when Mattias made the kick, his dad jumped in his swimming pool, holy glow. He was so excited about what his son had just done. So, again, one of those connections that otherwise wouldn't be possible without script work of those people. Mr. Kicker shouted out to the English department, I thought this one was really interesting, because basically, they just got done talking about civil rights. And what he realized in all their discussions of civil rights is because our English department continues to teach great literature like The Killamackeberg, that our students come into those discussions well-prepared and really have a cultural understanding, and not just a historical understanding. So, he took that moment to shout out to the English department, and I thought that was pretty interesting. And the last piece of it, on Sunday, November third, one of the neatest things that we do, was we had our new class of N H S inductions. And again, I can't say enough about, um, Dr. Rook and Mr. Schwinn, and the hard work that they do for N H S. And I believe there at the podium is Ms. McQuinn. And I believe also in the room tonight, we have the pleasure of the N H S president, correct, Mr. Hatfield? As you look down. And again, it'll show you the modesty and the hard work of those individuals. So, that's a report from the high school, thank you.
Like I say every year about the Veterans Day assemblies, thank everyone for who puts those on, because those are amazing every year. Anything else?
Um, I believe there are fire and earthquake safety drills in your packet. And then we do have one thing that is not on the agenda, it's to kind of prepare you for a presentation Dr. Taylor is going to do in December. So, I will turn it over to him.
Hello again. We will no longer, Desi is no longer providing us with a, um, an annual performance report score percentage. So, for the past two years, we've scored a hundred percent on our annual performance report, and we've been very proud of that. We looked to continue that trend, um, and Desi, uh, went and changed the way that they presented the data. So, next month, I am going to be going very in-depth into the data. So, I'm going to throw turns around like MAP Performance Index, or N P I for short, Normal Curve Equivalency, or N C E for short. In order to prepare you, um, to attempt to digest some of this data, Bailey Otto came up with a, a Frequently Asked Questions document which you have in front of you. We're going to, uh, provide that to media as well and, and post it on our website. It, it just goes into what the A B R is, um, what each section is measuring. And it's still the same sections. The reason, the justification that Desi gave for changing the way that they present the data is that we cannot give your school district a percentage score or a grade and expect everyone to know what that is. If you get a ninety-five percent, what does that mean? Does that mean across, it, it cannot define your entire district and your entire programs, right? Which I understand. The problem with that is, it makes you dig into the data, and so, we have three areas. We have status, which is what we're used to looking at, we would get twelve points out of sixteen, or sixteen out of sixteen in status. And then if we needed extra points, we would look at growth and progress to add to that. We didn't really understand and dig into what the growth and progress were telling us. We knew that it added to our total score and it got us to a hundred percent. So, this is going to force us, and, and their justification is forcing us to dig into this and understand what does status mean. Status is a three-year N P I average, um, that gives us a score. And, and we're able to compare that to the state average score. And then we're going to talk about growth, which they moved to the front, and growth is based on individual student growth. And in order to get that, you have to have two points, you have to have last year's score and this year's score. And so, each one of those scores will add to that overall district growth score. And then we're going to talk about progress, um, progress is a bit difficult for us, and when we look at the data, um, and I can pull this up real quick. Dr. Fleek's going to pull that up. So, these are the, one of the two documents that, um, I've linked there. And it's very hard to see, but if you look at the right-hand column, um, that's the progress column. So, they have, they put growth in the, in the first column, they put status in the middle column, which is what we used to look at first. And on the right side, they put progress. And if you'll notice, our progress scores are negative. Progress comes from averaging three years ago data with two years ago data and coming up with a score. And then taking this year's data and averaging it to last year's data and coming up with a score. And then the difference between those two is where progress is. Well, we've scored a hundred percent the past two years. So, our progress at times may be down just a little bit. If you look at those scores, negative two-point-three, negative zero-point-four. And, and that's understandable when you're talking about a district who's doing as well as we have done. Now, obviously, there are areas we can improve on, and, and we're going to dig into it and identify those. Um, I, I know for a fact, we're already addressing a couple of areas that we've looked at, um, and, and put things in place. And I want to, to kind of re-review the data that we got last year, we got in February. And so, our teachers and our administrators, in order to address issues, had February, March, and maybe the first week of April before we tested again, that's very difficult. And, um, so, we've been continually putting things in place in order to address those issues and to improve. So, that's the short of it. Next month, we will dig into it a little more, um, and I will prepare some slides that actually delve into this data and look at individual building data. I have updated the PowerPoint presentation, um, to become a little more modern and, and to hopefully look at that data in a, in a little different way. So, I just wanted to give you a preview, so that you maybe had some time to look over the F A Qs, to look over those two documents, um, that I've linked there.
As long as we have these, we'll be okay.
I hope so.
And that will be the end of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Unfinished Students Instructional Program Presentation, Middle School, High School, Library.
That's me! Okay, um, so, we're going to do something a little different. We've all been sitting, right? And we are right next to the library, in the library. So, um, we are going to do a walking tour. Before we do, um, just point out a few things. I know that we've talked about the renovations that we've done in the library, um, so I'll kind of take you through and show you some of that. But, that was a while ago. Everything is still up and running, everything's still being used, um, all the equipment is great. But, we are still looking forward. Um, and I was really excited tonight, um, after school, I met with, um, the librarian at Valley and the head librarian out at the Community Center Library. And we are working together, um, to try and boost teen reading, um, and especially a summer program. So, we're actually going to be taking, um, some of the things that we do here and kind of bringing that to the summer, to a program for students around the community, um, and adults and other community members. So, we are super excited to have the opportunity to kind of spread everything and make sure that all of the resources here, and all of those things not only benefit our students, but also our community. And we are very appreciative of everything that our community has done for us and continues to do. Also, we are looking at V R, that's going to be our new addition, um, coming up pretty soon. So, uh, we have all of this fun stuff going on, but V R has kind of finally gotten to the point where I am comfortable making the investment. It used to be very connected to, uh, advancing computers, and you'd have to attach to a, a game station or something like that. But now, it is, or you had a phone that you'd stick in it, you guys have kind of seen the Google cardboard. All very neat, uh, but they now have standalone units, so the computer is actually in the headpiece, um, which makes it a lot easier for us. Students don't have to download an app on their phone, teachers don't have to have all those resources. So, we are looking at adding that to our already amazing program. So, if you guys want to.
Well, you want to point out the picture in the middle of that slide? There's a, the, the library is named the R W Thomas Library. R W was the superintendent here for a very long time. So, that is his picture, it does hang in the library, and the five people you see around that picture are his children. His wife is still alive in our community, or did she pass away? She passed away recently, but they are very supportive of the library, and we enjoy it very much when they come and check it out. So, I just wanted to point that out. Those, that is the Thomas.
Um, but we have a lead group that's been working with Spheros. And basically, what the kids are doing, they're little, I'll show you what a sphero is, it's much easier. So, they are little robots that the kids code. And so, what happens is, they get out, um, uh, an iPad, it has a program on it, and the kids have to figure out the distance and the angle at which the shape is turning. And then distance again, where it's going to rotate. So, it takes them quite a while to get through the shapes, but they have done a very good job. So, they're actually, we're going to be ripping this off soon, because they've done all the shapes, they've completed that, and now they are creating their own obstacle courses, which are kind of on the ground, they're still in construction. But they're taking straws and cardboard boxes and building an obstacle course that they'll have to then code their robots through. So, that's been super fun. I think the kids have gotten very creative with it. But we have, uh, the Wii to play over here that the kids get to play on in the morning and at lunch. Um, there's a few teacher kids that come in after school and they utilize the Wii a lot. But, we have lots of fun. We also have an Xbox over on that side that the kids can also game on. Gaming has been a part of education for a while, and we have some new teachers who are very interested in gamification and using it in the classroom. And so, that is also an area that we're looking to kind of beef up a bit. Probably within the next few months, next month or two, um, we're actually going to have a night where the kids can come in and play games, and they're going to set up like different games, different stations. And we're going to have Iggy, from Iggy's Pop Shop downtown, is going to come in and he's going to help us kind of arrange some of that and set up some other games. So, kind of another neat community opportunity. Um, we have a Lego wall that the kids, uh, have fun with. They stick lots of pieces on, and we had a piece since they can build out on it as well, um, that the kids have built out. They've gotten about this far, and then it falls down, which is a little too heavy. But the kids have a blast, they come in and take stuff down and put stuff back up, so they have a lot of fun with the Lego wall. Then we have the three-D computers. And if you don't know about the three-D computers, um, I'll be happy to show you. But you can kind of see there's a wider range of activities, um, that the kids can do. They can work with human bodies, work on planets, there's some, um, more mechanical systems. We are looking at adding, um, an auto mechanics program on here that is phenomenal. The kids will basically learn all the parts of a motor, it's kind of got a classroom component to it, where they'll do discussions. And then the kids will actually have to choose the right tool from the toolbox, put it on the part, and take apart the motors, put them back together. If it runs well, then they've done it correctly, if it doesn't, they have to figure out what they did. If it doesn't, they have to figure out what they did wrong. There are hints along the way, but the kids actually will pick up the actual tools using the computer and then learn about not only the tools, but what they'd have to do to get to the right part, what the part looks like, how to take it apart and put it back together. So it's a pretty cool program, but we're looking at getting that. We're also looking at a chemistry application that they have. So it will be a more in-depth analysis of chemical bonds and different things like that. It's not my strong suit, but it's gotten to the point where our kids can do a lot more with it and the teachers are willing to let them. So the kids basically come in. The anatomy application, which is kind of shown on that second row, has been great for our students. They actually prefer to come down here and kind of get on that machine, on the machines, and play around with that as a review for tests. So it's certainly not anything that replaces teachers, but it's an amazing tool for our kids to be able to interact and really take that learning to another level. That is about it for down here. We do have some stuff out. We have 3D pens. The middle school art program added that to their curriculum. And it was pretty fun. The kids each got a 3D pen. It basically kind of works like a hot glue gun. The tip of it gets hot and it melts the plastic filament that you put through. And so the kids were able to kind of sculpt with the plastic. Not the easiest thing in the world. If you ever pick one up, they're pretty difficult to use. But the kids really had fun kind of deciding what their shape was going to be and how they were going to build it up and it be supported. So they had to figure out how to do all of that. It was, it was a lot of fun. They did a good job. So that's something that's been picked up and added, it's new. Any questions about the things down here? I have to believe that I'm missing anything? I did want to mention, we did have 3D printers down here, but we went ahead and moved them to the technology department or the tech department, industrial tech. They use them more than we do. It was really cool. We had one go down about a month ago. And it was a little bitty part, plastic part that goes on the bottom and it holds this base steady. Well, the base has to be perfectly straight in order for it to print correctly. Otherwise, everything's off and you get this awkward shape. So it was kind of a big deal. He came to me and he has this little part of his Gage Wigan. And he says, we need you to order this part. And I was like, why don't you just print one? And he was like, okay. And I was like, just, I'll contact the guy. So I called the company and they're like, okay, the part's real cheap. It's only $10, but you really need to send the computer, or send the printer back. It's a very difficult procedure, you know, you're going to have to pay for that and this and that. And the bill was just adding up. And I was like, oh my goodness, I don't know. And Gage is like, I can do it. It's like, you know what? At this point, let's do it. Okay, Gage, I'm willing to let you do that. He designed the parts, fixed, put all four as his design. Everything is stable and it was running today. So I mean, absolutely amazing, super proud of that kid. And what awesome problem solving and real world kind of situation to be able to provide our kids. And then they fixed it. I mean, he's like on cloud nine. Because of course, like, did you tell the guy yet that I fixed it? I was like, I will. I'm super excited. I think he's wanting to get paid, but. So if we can, we'll go upstairs. I did want to show you the upstairs just to prove I still have books in here. People are often giving me a hard time for that. So let's go upstairs and I'll show you some of the changes. Shells up here. Today, we had CPR classes up here, so that was pretty exciting. But we have that area. Then we have the shelves. We actually tore down, there used to be big wooden faces on these with this blue diamond in the middle. Just kind of drove me crazy. They were not very modern. So we basically took them off and cleaned up the metal and kind of had more of an industrial feel up here. Our library changed a few years ago. Everything was sorted using the Dewey Decimal System. We still have Dewey. He's still here. Everything's organized, but it's also grouped by genre. That was really important to us because the kids would come up in the fiction section, which would be from over here all the way to this historical area. All of those books were grouped by author's last name. That's not real easy for a kid. They know what they want to read, not who they want to read. So we switched everything up. All of the books are in genres. So each category, each shelf is labeled on the outside, so the kids kind of know where to go. They're also color-coded. So there's a little square with the same color as the title of that genre. And so the kids have really been able to come in and kind of find the things that they love, what their interests are. And then after they're done with that series, they can find something similar very easily and very quickly. And that has really helped our kids a lot. We also have a fun read section back here for our kids who are struggling with reading so that they can pick something up. It's a little easier for them, especially for a fun read. Sometimes you just need to read something that is fun, doesn't take a whole lot of thought. And so we do have those things for our kids. And then we also have the nonfiction, the reference books that we have not gotten rid of by any means. A lot of our kids still like to hold a book. I would rather flip through a book than online. They use both and that's fine by me. But there are a lot of great books. We frequently update. These are some of the books that were new this month and it's a wide variety. So we really, I think we do a very good job of that. The kids are very comfortable coming to us and letting us know what they're interested in. And to me, that's the greatest feeling when a kid has something they want to read and they come to you and they're all excited and I can say, yeah, I can get that to you in two days. So that's super great and the kids really appreciate it and like the fact that they can do that. So it's an awesome thing that we provide for them, opportunity. So any questions about up here?
Nice lighting, everything.
Yeah, lighting is, we, so we took that down. We also got rid of some of the shelves on the end. Used to be blocked off so that you had to come one way to get through. So we kind of opened that up and then the color helped a lot up here. Mrs. Brumfield's up here and she does a great job. All right, well, we can go back down, maybe that.
And so I was just going to go over how the norms came about. And you know, if you feel free to jump in because you know it was your work session. So on Wednesday, October 9th, the St. Genevieve Bar Two Board of Education held a work session. We went over some legal topics. We talked about, the presenter talked about the sunshine law. And then the second presenter that attended from MSBA talked to us about developing norms for the board to follow. So there were some collaborations. The board members here in front of you tonight, the seven people worked on these norms. And so tonight, what I'll show you and let them discuss and continue to work on a little bit is a draft copy of their norms. So we'll review, discuss, and if they need to revise anything, we'll make those revisions. And then the final draft will be brought back on the Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 regular meeting. And you all, they will be up for adoption if you all decide that you want to adopt them. Okay? So I have the norms pulled up. So here is a copy of the norms. The board members, you all have a paper copy in case you need to, in case you want to write on it. At the beginning, as you discussed, and Ms. Otto worked on these and made them all nice and pretty. So at the very bottom are the original norms that were discussed the night of the work session. The top part of the page, as you discussed, the first thing that you see there is the mission of the school district. Underneath the mission is our motto, Dragon's Family Tradition Excellence. And from there, there are one, two, three, four, five, five norms. You originally had seven, but we were able to work some of them together because they were similar. And so we came up with five norms. So do you want me to read through these? How do you want me to do this? What do you think? Should I read them? Because the public is not heard of them? Okay. So the first one here is decision-making. Focus on the best interest of students while ensuring that decisions are financially responsible. Take into account current data. Consider the impact on staff. And align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Genevieve Bar Two and beyond. So that is the first norm. The second norm is preparation and effective use of time. Come prepared for board of education meetings by reading the board packets prior to the board of education meetings and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected or researched and then shared at the meeting. The third norm, cohesion. Speak with one voice. After deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting the decision in words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak on behalf of the board without authorization from the board. The fourth one is representation. Act as ambassadors for the St. Genevieve Bar Two School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the school district. And do last norm, behavior and interactions. Listen to, understand and communicate to explain. Respect and value the diverse perspectives, opinions and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students and their families, employees, patrons and community members. Be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of nonverbal behaviors as well. Encourage open and honest communication on a consistent and continuous basis. Nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, respect and connectedness.
It was very good.
Put the work, put together great, thank you. And it's an awesome combination. But that night, we, we looked at three or four schools, other schools. And one of them was pretty formal and one of them was, and this was a good combination of the two.
And from my perspective, and I'm sure Paul's, it was a lot of fun to watch. Because you know, you started out with partners and then they grew. And just to watch that consensus happen, that was, that was one of those teaching moments that we love.
Well, the neat thing is the teachers and administrators have their, you know, like collaboration dates or just your automatic learning things. Well, that night for us, that's what it was for us. And then to really go in and the questions that were asked to us and then we, I mean, it was so easy for us because we're all here for you guys and, and the students. I mean, they're our top priority. And so when we were there at that meeting and talking about this, everything, we were so excited. And it was hard to go home, you know? So we know what you guys do out there when you're so excited about something. That's how we are as board members. So we go on for, you know, extra training and stuff too. So, you know, we, and meet with the legislators. I mean, so it's not like we just come up here and meet here in our board meeting. We do a lot. I mean, but that's because we want to, you know?
I think it's nice twice on the, I think we talked about this multiple times that night is we don't all always agree with everything. So there are disagreements, but under the cohesion section and under the behavior section, it sets an example and I hope this board also sets that example of speak with one voice. Agree to disagree and move forward. I think it's great.
Well, Ms. Otto and I will work on taking the original norms off the bottom and getting them finalized and prepared for you in December then.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have set procedures for annual school board election.
Yeah, start time again. What happened?
You lose it? Control shift D.
Look at you. Thank you.
You're going to be required to come to all boards.
That's a good trick when kids aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. And then all of a sudden they have a white screen. Control shift D and all tabs go up like, dude, you're busted.
Now you guys know.
Watch out. Okay. So here is the summary, but I'm actually going to read what's in the packet because this contains all the information and once you see there is a summary. So I will bring that back in December and I believe again in January. I think we have need before it closes. So I'll keep that up there. So the annual school board election will be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. A copy of the news release is attached in your packet. But I also gave you, I gave you an update in your handouts because when we sent the original, we did not update the hours of training because for new members, the new law is that they have 18-point hours of training within one year of being elected as a board member. So that is an increase to what was in the past. In the past, I think it was 16 hours. So now it's 18 and a half hours within the first year of their service. So that is the update. The expiry terms for board members are Mr. Eric Bosler, Mr. James Kerschner and Mrs. Martha Riesinger. A candidate shall file in person and in writing according to board policy and state law. Filing will begin on December 17th, 2019 at 8:00 a.m. and will continue during regular business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Filing will end on January 21st, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. Filing will not occur on days that the school district office is closed due to inclement weather or on the following days of December 23rd, 24th, 25th, 30th and 31st, 2019, and January 1st and January 20th, 2020. Documents necessary to file as a candidate may be secured in person from the superintendent's office at 375 North Fifth Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri. So that is the official notice. Like I said, I believe there is something that'll go in the paper and the Herald, the Sun Times, it's going to go on KTJJ, so.
Are these the highly paid positions?
This is a voluntary position. I've been asked this. This is a voluntary position. There is no pay for a school board member, other than the great appreciation of the staff, students and community.
Absolutely.
Ready for it?
Yes.
Move, move to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that board of education authorizes an election to be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 to be, to fill three-year terms as directors of the St. Genevieve Board of Education. Furthermore, the notice of the election and certification of candidates shall be submitted to the county clerk and according to state statutes. And a motion and a second round call, Eric Bosler?
Yes.
David Boba?
Yes.
Joe Nug?
Yes.
Jim Kretchner?
Yes.
Benjamin, yes?
Martha Rieser?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carried, settle.
Nice place to point everything. I might have had a little speech maybe, but I never go by that because I can't even, my words don't come out loud. Just to let you all know that this whole board is, if you don't know us all, we're, we truly, truly work for our school district, our students, the families, the administration, everybody here. We work hard to make this school district. Not we make it hard to make this school district, but it allows them to do the things that's, you know, that can really, you can, you know what we're doing, you know what you guys get to do. So for that, we want to thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's it for unfinished business. Under new business, we have Saint Genevieve High School Topic and Research and History Class Trip to Germany.
Alright, guys. So, I'll try to keep this short, but, so, I have this class Topics and Research in History and you guys, um, this is actually kind of the, the brainchild of, uh, Mr. Haney and, uh, Dr. Mosher and myself. And so, what I wanted to do is I wanted to create a class that, um, the impetus was that it would work on National History Day project cause it's, it's really a tough thing to do in the high school with all the stuff that they're doing. And so, really, as we put together the curriculum, I kinda had some other ideas about what I wanted to do. And you guys know that my, the global collaboration stuff that we do is kind of pretty important to me. Uh, it's pretty cool. Uh, one of the boys that was in your, uh, presentation, Gabe Bova, I talked to him at the Veterans Assembly. He's going to England this summer and he's meeting the girl that he started talking to five years ago in eighth grade. And he's actually gonna meet that kid. So, anyway, so, these connections are like kinda real. So, it's kind of a cool thing. So, anyway, so, I got on this, um, this website called Gap. It's a German-American exchange program. And, um, I got ahold of this lady. You, you just, you kinda like follow her profile and then they choose you and they say, hey, listen, um, would you like to collaborate? Well, and I'm like, well, yeah, sure. So, we have some virtual things that we're getting ready to do. We're doing the Christmas box with them. We've actually been doing some things where we actually been looking at topics, um, about, uh, Germany, looking at Angela Merkel and, uh, their election and then our election in twenty twenty. And their kids are, uh, talking about it with our kids. And so, we're already having that collaboration. Roestock, Germany is in the old East Germany. I talked to their teacher, Inez, for the first time this past weekend. She was brought up in the communist regime of East Germany. And so, it's way up, it's north. It's two hours north of Berlin. It's two hours east of Hamburg. And so, it's, it's really kind of, it's a neat place. And so, anyway, so, um, she said, hey, we wanna come over to your school and we want you to come over to our school. Well, normally, as you guys know, that I like to do this in the summertime, which is kind of a neat thing. The problem is I have seniors, alright, so they'll graduate. And so, and, and I was like, well, plus the flights. And this is kinda what we have to look at. We could have flew, uh, Chicago to Hamburg for three hundred ninety-seven dollars last month. And so, I mean, the, the flights are really rocky. So, anyway, so, that's, so, I'm like, yeah, let's see if we can do this. So, I went to Miss Trainee and said, this is what I wanna do, alright. And so, listen, this is kind of a new thing. This is different. And so, I come to Dr. Flea and, and, uh, Dr. Taylor. And like, what I wanna do is I wanna pull kids out of school the first week of March, somewhere around there. So, be five days out of class, alright. Uh, we'd fly over. We'd probably leave like that Friday night. Uh, we'd fly over, get there on Saturday morning, go there all week, fly Sunday morning, get back by Sunday noon. We'd fly out of Chicago and then come back down here, alright. The, uh, uh, if you guys approve this, I'll talk to the, to the parents. Uh, we'll get the appropriate waiver signed and all that kinda stuff. Uh, Dr. Flea's checked with music and this is actually, uh, the liability issue would be, it's all, all shucks and jives and all that kinda good stuff. So, we got that plan too. We would like to make it an angle part of the curriculum, uh, where we, uh, most of the time, we'll probably go to Germany, uh, there's different schools there. But I have schools in Spain, Portugal, in the UK, um, and Italy. The lady in Italy really wants us to come. And she's just right outside of Venice. Um, my friend in Denmark, uh, the class in Prague. Uh, there's schools all over the place that would love for us to do this. The, what makes it really cool for the first week of March, the flights are really cheap. Uh, I just checked before we came over here. It was like five hundred and twenty dollars to fly from Chicago to Hamburg, alright. So, the kids would pay for it. There's no out-of-pocket to the school. Uh, and then we stay with the host families, so the kids aren't having that money either. So, you think about, you're talking about a week-long trip to Germany and there's a lot of really cool medieval towns close by. Uh, they get to look at some, uh, old communist stuff there as well. And then, of course, like we could date for to Berlin. And so, um, but it's just a phenomenal opportunity. And so, um, Miss Trainee felt like it'd be best with, uh, and Dr. Flea as well, that we talk to you guys and kind of get that in the open and get your input from that before we make a decision.
How many students?
Uh, it would be somewhere between eight and twelve. Cassie's in the class and so is Katie, alright. And so, um, and I, so we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors there.
So, how many of yours brought?
Me.
Just you?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you're wanting to go, Eric.
Remember, don't you?
We did. I think we did. So, yeah, so, I'm, but really, it was just, that idea would be considered, yeah. And that'd be, the, the big concern we had is for the kids, they'll, they're going to seven days and they start, you know, it starts counting against them and we'd like for, I need your input on this, but we'd like for that not to count against them, if that's possible, alright. Because especially with the seniors, there's an awful lot going on with those guys. And I have, I guess, four of those, alright, yeah, in class.
So, you say not count against them, these would be excused absences, or what it be?
No, of course, yeah.
I would.
Well, it's part of the curriculum.
I would, I would like to, you're going to be doing curriculum-based trips. You're going, are you, are you going to prepare some things for these kids to be completing while on the trip? Or are they just going to experience the architecture, the history? How are you going to discuss that with them and, and make that curricular, I guess?
Sure, sure, sure. That's a great question. Uh, the cool thing is, is we'll be going to the school there as well. It just, we just won't be like, you know, sightseeing for, for seven days. Well, actually, we'll be going to school at Roestock, alright. And the, uh, English teachers will actually be, um, they'll be part of that class too. Uh, they will have a science. I'd like to work with the, the high school, uh, teachers and see if there's any, some type of project we could tie in for that and they could work on that while they are on the trip, which the kids wouldn't really like, but I mean, that would be kind of hard to do, right? So, on a side note, as you guys know, Shelley is, uh, the director of student teachers at CMO and she heard me talking to Inez and she goes, hey, could student teachers from CMO go over there and teach? And they're in the process of working on that right now. We actually, CMO will be sending teachers over there and, and, and teach for four weeks as well. So, that's kind of the inside deal. So, it's kinda funny. And so, but anyway, so, yeah, so, I mean, it is definitely, yeah, this isn't wild. Uh, I'm not gonna kind of gloss this over, man. This is, it's a cool thing. We're, we're gonna have a lot of fun. But we are also, this is also, uh, we are gonna tie that in to, uh, to, uh, to our curriculum, what we're gonna be doing. Uh, I do have another school in Germany and the lady, you gave me, uh, and they want us to come over as well. Now, that's closer to where Saint Genevieve roots are. That's over on the western side of Germany. Alright, that's, uh, uh, it's a little bit east of Strasbourg, which is kind of our area, alright. And so, that might be something in the future as well. So, I would propose this, you know, every year, this is something we wanna do. It'll be fun. So.
So, they'd be attendance day.
Love how we're on the camera. Looking at me going, here's really the way I see it. It's a board-approved trip with a, uh, district staff. That's a field trip.
I think global exposure is something we have to infuse into their kids, so I think go for it.
Yeah, it's always over the summer.
Yeah, it's a summer night school.
Right, right. As a matter of fact, I think you took one a couple of years ago to England. Right, I had to take one again in the summer. We're taking it to Denmark. Yeah, we're doing that too. So, but this would be, yeah, that's why I say it's kind of a little bit of a different animal. But, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
We've been the recipient of this sort of trip for many years. Free has arranged for a group of French students to come over. And they come over with their teachers for about two weeks and spend time. So, I can assure you, when he says that they're gonna be in school, if this is like that, they will be in school. They will be learning about that culture and going through those activities just as those students do. It's an amazing thing. This is just the first time that we're looking to transcend it to us going there, as you guys have talked about. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students. And I thank Dr. Oldham for being brave enough to drive.
Well, first of all, anybody knows you, I mean, seeing you teach your class, especially when you're a faculty in a little school. I'm talking one. That, that was amazing. Just, just to see the kids. Well, I was watching kids more than anything. But he was just doing all this talking and it wasn't a one that didn't, that wasn't engaged in that program.
Well, Martha, to be fair, we have great kids.
Yes, well, that's true, but great teachers too.
Okay, so, and then there, there are, there are two, three kids that aren't done going to go on this trip, alright. Well, see, that, so that'd just be the one class that they, that they would miss. It's a, it's a run school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It's only one class. So, and we would work that out.
Yeah, that's pretty easy.
It sounds like.
Cause they'll need this stuff anyway.
Sounds like you're working with the other teachers to incorporate this in. They could possibly not miss much work here also.
No, with, with our class, but, uh, we're actually, while we're doing this, uh, I, I just got a grant through Stevens Initiative. It's a thousand dollar grant. And my kids are gonna be talking to kids. Uh, it's actually a, a, a curriculum out of Washington DC for six weeks where we talk, we collaborate with a class in Tunisia, a class in Jordan, and then there's another class in the US. So, it'll be four classes together. So, that, they'll be working on that project while, while we'll be going to. And that's, that'll go from March to May. So, they'll definitely have something to do.
I'll move to, uh, Saint Genevieve Travel, traveling to Germany March for twenty twenty.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You pose. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Disaster Mitigation Plan.
That's a nice segue from, uh.
It's just mitigation.
Nice. Who wrote the idea?
So, I was contacted by Drew Christian with the Southeast Missouri Regional Planning Commission and he was holding several meetings um, here in Saint Genevieve. Every five years, our disaster mitigation plan must be updated. So, I attended those meetings. I've, I've called Drew several times, um, to make sure that we're, we're completing our documents appropriately. I think I've got all that done. Um, disaster mitigation monies become available when a disaster has been declared in the state of Missouri. And, um, after discussing it with Drew, it's to make sure that we can mitigate our risks for those type of disasters. Um, and that's why we're required to update our plan. If you want to, to apply for grants, uh, for mitigation money, you have to be a part of this plan process. Um, so, we have been a part of it. I've got everything ready to go for him except the resolution, um, from you tonight, which is, which is before you for your approval.
I move to for the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You pose. Motion carries. Next, we have action for closing meeting. I'm ready.
I move that the Board of Education holds a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote. Calling a regular open meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, to be held at our Deputy Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, Saint Genevieve, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees. Scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. I further move the notice of this meeting and its tentative agenda to be postponed as required by law. Have a motion and a second roll call, Eric Bosler?
Yes.
David Bova?
Yes.
Joe Nug?
Yes.
Jim Kerschner?
Yes.
Kevin Daniel?
Yes.
Martha Riesner?
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven oh.
I'll move to go with a closed record and a closed record and a closed vote. That's for sure. Alright.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You pose. Motion carries. Eight thirty.